I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christina, can you call the roll, please?
Yep. Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parsons?
Present.
Mayor Lumberg?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need approval for the minutes of August 29th, September 3rd, and September 9th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 29th, September 3rd, and September 9th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills and claims are submitted for your approval. If I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bills and claims that were submitted with the agenda. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one item on the consent calendar to approve the plat of Track 1 and Lot 6, Block 6, Tallgrass Edition. If I can have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that tract. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anybody from the public wish to speak, address the council tonight? Hearing none. Item 7B is our audit report, 2018 audit report. Dwight, you're up.
Yes, my name is Dwight Berglin. I'm a partner of Quan Berglin and post out of Elk Point, South Dakota. And you should have in front of you or access to the audit report for the year ending December 31st, 2018. On page one is the independent audits report. This is our report on the financial statements as presented. It's an unmodified opinion. And basically what it says is that the financial statements that are presented are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. The management discussion analysis starts on page three and it goes to 13. These are presented by Christine and Brian, maybe. Maybe more Christine and Brian. But anyway, it's kind of a thumbnail of what took place during 2018. It's got some comparative statements for the balance sheets and income statements. And it's got some graphs of where the different revenues and expenses are being spent and received. It has some capital asset comparison and notes, mortgages and notes comparison. And then on page 14, we have the statement of net position, which is the Gatsby 34 statement. And included in this governmental activities are the land, construction progress, and capital assets net of depreciation. And it also includes the debt, the amount due in one year and longer than one year, of both the governmental and the business type activities. And then the total of those two. So this statement kind of encompasses the entire city as to what the city is worth, basically, based on actual cost, historical costs on those fixed assets. More than likely, the fixed assets are worth more than what is listed there, but we have to report it at historical cost. And then the statement of activities, which shows the revenue and expenses by the various funds. And on page 16, are the actual fund balances, the general fund, third cent sales tax, the street maintenance, and the non-major governmental funds. And on page 55, there is a breakdown of how those non-governmental funds are broken, which funds make up those totals. And on page 19 and 20 is the revenue and expenses for the governmental funds. Page 21, towards the bottom of the page, shows the amounts of net change in your fund balance of those funds. So the general fund increased by $2,136,000. Third cent sales tax decreased by $495,000. The street maintenance fund increased by 69. And the other governmental funds as a total increased by $53,000. So overall, for the city, it was an increase of $1,764,000 in your fund balance. Page 23 and 24 are the enterprise funds, the water sewer, golf course, and the non-major enterprise funds, which are back in, I think, page 58 is a list of those that make up that non-major. So you have the balance sheet, which includes the assets and liabilities. And on page 25, the revenues and expenses are shown there. The second to the, third to the last line shows the increase or decrease in the net position for the year. You can see right above that, the transfer out to the other various funds that, and some of the governmental funds also include those transfers. Page 26 and 27 are the cash flow. It just shows the increase in the cash accounts. And then on page 28, we start with our notes of the financial statements, where we list the summary of significant accounting policies, a description of the governmental funds, the basis of accounting, the different types of equity classifications. Then there's a receivables and payable note, the inventory note. And on page 38 is an increase or decrease in the general capital assets for both the general fund and the business type enterprise funds. And note eight shows the change in the long-term debt on page 39. Page 40 has a listing of the debt, the amount of, it shows the rate of interest, the due date, and the fund that it's being paid out of. On page 41 shows the revenues that, the expenses of both the bonds or notes that are due, plus the interest, for the first five years are listed individually. And then there's five-year increments up to 2038. I plan on not being here to give you that in 2038. There's the wastewater agreement on note nine. We have payables, the net position, inter-fund transfers on page 42. And this pension fund note, which is number 13, that goes from page 43 all the way to 46. Very interesting reading. We have the risk management on note 14. And then on page 48, we have the budget to actual. So on page 40, and this is a general fund, page 49, towards the bottom, after your final budget, you were going to decrease your fund balance by $150,538. And it actually increased by $2,136,000. So your fund balance is $2,287 higher than what you thought it was going to be. We have the, on page 53 is more information about the pension. Then on page 55, as I mentioned earlier, those non-major governmental funds. And special revenue, non-major governmental funds on page 58. The combining balance sheets for capital projects on 61. And then on 63 is the independent audits report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. We found that during the course of our audit, as we go through the system, that we have the one deficiency of the lack of segregation of duties. But I know you're working on that, and hopefully next year, you won't have that material weakness. We also look at the compliance to make sure that you're in compliance with all the rules, regulations, the contracts, grants, and notes that you have. And we did find that you were in compliance with all those requirements. Page 65, we mentioned about the lack of segregation of duties. And on page 66 is your letter that addresses those segregation of duties. Overall, I don't know if you have any questions on what I just went through. It was kind of a, it took us longer to prepare this than it did for me to report to you.
So Dwight, that segregation of duties, is that common in other smaller governmental entities?
Yes. We have, we have other entities or nonprofits and governmental that are working to implement different, more safeguards and oversight of the financial statements. And by doing that, they're able to get rid of that.
So Dwight, regarding that, is there a reason that in this audit, that you couldn't notate what we were doing to mitigate that?
Well, you didn't have it implemented for the full year.
No, I know that, but you couldn't have made mention of what we were doing to mitigate it?
Well, I guess when we look at it, we'd have to look at the full year in order to eliminate it. And then it's not one of those items, I guess, that we would probably discuss in the audit report. It might go through the management letter that you're redoing, you know, implementing those controls.
He's an auditor show. What can we say? I have several in my family, so no offense.
Other questions? If not, can I have a motion to approve the 2018 certified audit?
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the 2018 certified audit as presented by Quan Berglin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to go to page 110 of the packet, just saying that the state has accepted the audit report. And then tomorrow, I will upload the audit report to our city website.
Very good.
Christina, thank you for all your efforts.
Very good. Item 8A, I think we're at second reading of ordinance 594, which is the adopting of the 2020 budget. If I can have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 594?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the calendar year 2020 budget? Questions? Comments?
I'll just be redundant with my comments. I'll be an A, just for the simple fact of the pool construction being pushed through. I still just don't think that's the right thing to do with all the infrastructure needs and now the flooding expenses that we have. I just am not in agreement with that when we were slated to do the improvements and spend $120 instead of the 1.6 million. I agree it needs work, but this is just happening way faster than anything else that we've ever had to come across our plates. So that's it for me.
Ben Norde, council member. Clark, any other questions? Comments? Call the roll, Christina.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
5-1. Thank you. Committee reports were down. The golf course has a standard CIP listing. Anything else from the golf course? Chuck?
Lot of water.
Correct.
Well, I talked to, Kelly came in today with a wonderful picture showing 11? 11 fairway? We lost a significant chunk of 11, another five feet, six feet?
Oh, it's bigger than that.
Is it?
Yeah.
So we're going to start looking at possibly doing engineering on that now to stabilize that bank.
Did it just go into the water?
Yep.
It's gone?
Yep, it's gone. Could be in the big dirt pile where we pile snow in the winter, because there's quite a bit of dirt there now.
Is that maintenance shed going to be a complete loss?
Kelly's taken an inventory of the equipment that was damaged. At this point in time, I'm not quite, I don't have a list yet, but he's doing some repairs in the office. So we've instructed all the department heads to keep track of those expenditures and all the efforts taken to repair the flood damage.
Very good. Thanks, Ryan. Moving on to Parks and Rec, we have a final report from ISG on the Aspen Park master plan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Amanda Prosser with ISG, and I have David Dockstead here with ISG as well. And yeah, we're here tonight to give you a final report on the master plan for the park. Since we met about a month ago, we were able to develop a few additional renderings of what the park could look like in the future. So within your packet, there should be three different views. The one that is pulled up on the screen here is a 3D rendering, looking to the north and west. So right at the bottom of the screen there is Highway 11. And like I said, there's a couple other images included within the packet. And one is more kind of, yeah, down there on ground level to give you an idea of what that improved roadway and circulation network could look like as you're down within the park itself. But I know we did a deep dive into the design last time, so I'm going to refrain from repeating myself. And tonight, we're really here to focus on what phasing, funding, and costs look like to implement this. And I just, I want to circle back to just remind everybody that there were some consistent themes when we first started meeting with user groups in the community. And that was to improve access and circulation, including trails and parking, make sure that there was a balance of athletics and community recreation facilities, make sure that there's amenities for all age groups, and that it's welcoming to everyone, and that sustainability and flexibility is built into all components. Another item that I wanted to bring up is that when we first met with user groups, it was very clear that there's already a lot of groups that are working together to share spaces, and that the city is already working collaboratively with these groups to maintain the facilities that are out there, as well as provide the programming that you see throughout the park. And those elements are going to need to continue in order to make future improvements. And so our phasing and our estimate approach is with that understanding that partnerships and collaboration and financial support from other groups is being taken into account. So with that said, we have the phasing plan pulled up here. And this one is of just a breakdown of how you could phase out the trail system and the roadway network. So one segment of that is from the very top of the screen, so starting up at Aspen Boulevard, and then working your way south into the park, and basically stopping where development stops today. So that is one segment that you could do at once. And then the second segment could be from that point to the south, which would bring you to where we're proposing the hockey arena. And then the last segment of that roadway section could be in alignment with Ironwood, taking you over to Big Sioux. To us, those are just the logical breaks, but it's not to say that you couldn't break it up in a different way as well. And then the last piece that I wanted to highlight is that that pool parking lot is, we are showing that as a standalone. And the order that these are shown aren't necessarily in order of priority. You could either start from the southwest and work your way north, or vice versa. And then the trails, again, could, you know, the perimeter loops could be implemented even ahead of the roadway infrastructure as well. Obviously, some of those key connectors throughout that space, you'd probably want to hold off in time with some of the other improvements. But that perimeter loop could be a nice addition if you decided to move forward with that sooner rather than later. And then if we want to go to the next image?
She's going to have in front of you. She's stopped off right now. She just kind of updated the payment plan yesterday, so.
Yep. Yeah. And then, and then the way the costs are broken out, so we have the parking and circulation improvements as its own segment. We are also showing that the pool improvements is its own group, miscellaneous site amenities. So what falls under that category are things like the playgrounds, volleyball courts, basketball courts, any of kind of those long game features, the dog park, the miscellaneous buildings and structures. So that applies to the three- or four-season shelter that's just south of the pool area. And then some of the shade structures that are associated with those kind of recreation amenities and the play areas. The ball field improvement, so everything related to improving the existing facilities to expanding that to the south is its own group. And then the ice rink and the hockey arena, that's its own kind of group itself, plus any parking to support that. And then the RC track improvements is also a standalone category. So as we look at the cost for that, as you noted earlier, we are carrying 1.6 million to fund the pool improvements. So that includes everything that has been brought forth previously by the Pool Improvement Committee and city staff. The next group there is the parking and circulation improvements. And as you can see towards the bottom there, that's where we break out the cost for those specific segments of roadway. So don't think that by any means you would have to take on that full amount right from the start. And then the miscellaneous site amenities, we are carrying line items for each of those specific improvements. And again, all of these things are easily phased in over time. And that's kind of the beauty of park projects, is that you usually have the space and the access working in your favor. You know, so if you wanted to add one public art piece over time, it's an easy add. If you wanted to only add one bocce ball court instead of two, again, it's an easy add over time. The other good thing about that is it's easier to show continuous improvement over time. And that's something that the community usually wants to see. So not every project has to be a multimillion dollar project. You know, sometimes some of those kind of low-hanging fruits, so to speak, can have a big impact from a recreation standpoint. The miscellaneous buildings and structures, again, one thing I wanted to point out here is that the storm shelter slash three-season pavilion, we are carrying a large dollar amount for that. But again, that could easily be backed off if the city pursued FEMA funding. And I think the only way that, you know, you would move forward with a structure like that is if you were able to secure FEMA funding to build that.
Yeah, none of these estimates include anything for funding. So these are the full costs at this point. And really, what we wanted to be is very open and honest and say, hey, if you don't get anything, you know, what is the full cost of these?
Yep. And so really what's shown on the front page here are, you know, in the, all of these numbers include 20% contingency and design permitting, testing fees included within them. So the total here on the front page is about 12.8 million. And then the items on the next sheet, or on the back of your printout there, are the ball field improvements, the ice rink hockey arena, and the RC track improvements. And the reason we separated these out, again, goes back to the partnership and collaboration opportunities. Obviously, some of those private organizations have raised significant funds over the years to make improvements to the park, and hoping that they would be willing to do that moving forward as well. So it's not to say that, for example, the ball field improvements would solely fall on private organizations, because there are some pieces of that that, you know, could be supported by city funds as well. And then the ice rink hockey arena, there, you know, the dollar amount from what has been shared with us to date is slightly greater, simply because we are carrying costs for the parking lot improvements and some of the kind of earthwork and things around that. And then the RC track improvements, again, about $220,000 there to relocate that facility and make some improvements to their observation deck and perimeter fencing and things like And so one thing, you know, to keep in mind, you know, we very strategically did not, or not strategically, but we intentionally did not put together, this is phase one, or this is phase two, because we didn't have a dollar amount to budget to. You know, I think once an overall budget is determined, you go back to the things that I mentioned right at the beginning, to making sure that you're hitting all of those themes and all of those kind of values that we pulled from the community, so that we're not forgetting about either one age group, or, you know, we're not addressing the circulation issues. So as long as every phase that is developed takes those pieces into consideration, you know, I feel that that's really the most important part.
No, I think that's fair. I think, and there was definitely some things that we didn't, we didn't break up. And we have additional detailed cost systems that we, that we're definitely going to provide that break down, you know, unit by unit and item by item. But there's some things that we would also say you shouldn't break down. So in regards to like the utility relocations and things like that, it's kind of all in that you're going to get those relocated. So there's some things that I would say that won't be broken up, but there's many that can be.
Mm-hmm.
Questions from the council?
Well, thank you for doing this. I think it's just going to give us a good overall perspective as we, you know, start to phase in things. It's really going to be helpful for the park board and the council. So thanks for all your efforts. And Chayson over here, you come from Minneapolis, don't you?
Well, I'm in Sioux Falls a lot.
I thought. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
No, it was a great exercise. Kudos to the community in regards to the involvement. I think you probably covered that, but it was really impressive to set up those user group meetings and to see how many people showed up. You have a community that's engaged and is really passionate about your park, which is awesome.
I enjoyed working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, there we go. We have a plan. Implementation to come. Item C, monthly police report in your packet for your review. Administration Resolution 23-19, street maintenance assessment. As we talked about during the budget process, we as a council are proposing to increase the street maintenance fee from $1.75 per lineal foot to $2.00 per lineal foot. If I can have a motion to approve that increase? If I can have a motion to approve that increase?
Some move.
Motion is second to improve increase the lineal assessment fee from $1.75 to $2.00, which increase of 25 cents per lineal foot. Any discussion, comments? I just made one little note in my packet here, an 80-foot lot, a pretty much standard lot in the city, Brandon would require an additional $20 on all of our our taxpayers. So I think it's a behooves us to increase this to the $2.00 and it'll be a good thing for our city to improve and maintain our roads throughout the city. No further questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D2, we have a block party application, 100 block of East Ponderosa.
I believe all of the proper all of the adjacent property owners have signed the application.
Okay. Motion is second to approve the block party application in 100 block of East Ponderosa. Any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Administration would like to discuss a little bit about the possibility of a high school engineering intern with the city of Brandon. High school student?
Right. He is 18 and is interested in engineering. They stated that would probably be between 10 to 20 hours a week that he would work with us. We have a lot of projects going on, so it would be nice to have someone around to pick up some of those small items. We don't have a whole lot of information as far as when he would start. We plan to do kind of an interview process with him and see how he does, see what he's interested in.
Did you want a motion, Brian, to proceed with this or?
Yes, well, you can wait unless there's unless there's objection. What we'll do is after after we interview him.
Bring it forward. Okay. Any strong opposition on part of anyone on the council?
Did we get any information on whether we would pay the intern or not yet?
Um, I think we would keep looking at that a little bit.
Isn't it through the high school program too, so they can't get paid?
Oh, they they asked if it if it was going to be a paid position.
Did you have?
Sounds like they prefer it to be a paid internship.
We have some money left over from what we allocated for Marcus.
We do. And then part of my salary gets reimbursed also by Federal Highway Funds. So I'm not sure if that is an opportunity to use on an intern or not.
Generally always preferred to be paid, yes. Check into that, all the details on that. Okay. Yes.
One of the things to think about, Tammy, is you have to ask them if, I think if we pay them, then they're under our insurance. If they're working as part of the school, then the school covers them, correct?
The school really doesn't cover kids, but they're they would be on their own. Their parents would be covering them.
We we would certainly add them. They'd be covered under workers' comp anyway.
Yeah.
As a volunteer or whatever.
Yeah, that's that's why we want the council to approve the hiring. And then they'd be covered under our workers' comp. I've seen some cities where they were using interns and unfortunately the kid got a hand smash in the tailgate of a dump truck and there was a fight between the insurers as to who was going to cover. So I would I would propose if we do this, we're going to make it a clean one. We're going to cover them and when they're when they're working for us.
If they're going to be on job sites.
Is this through the Kevin Brick supervised program? Because there's a whole agreement that covers that.
Yeah, I would assume that there's going to be.
Okay.
It's Adam and the Burgers.
Since I think you guys are probably there first applicant, I think there's a lot of things to get worked out, so you just need to do that administratively. Item number D4, there's a proposal to compensate Larry Bixby $750 for his role as a safety coordinator stipend, safety coordinator. If I can have a motion to approve. Motion is second to approve $750 stipend to Larry Bixby. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the volunteer list for the recent sandbagging?
Some move.
Motion is second to approve the list of volunteers as presented in our packet. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to all those people.
This, yeah, it was it was tremendous. This doesn't include all everybody that that was down there because we didn't get all of their names. This is just from the afternoon session. We had an evening session as well where I think Matt Christensen sent out a text and we had 40 football players show up along with a number of community members. You know, unfortunately, we we lost the fight against the river for the two houses, but just a tremendous tremendous group of folks that showed up. It was awesome.
So they did get what?
They did. You know, we up until about 9:00, 9:30, the National Weather Service had predicted a 15 and a half foot crest. And then about 9:30, about 9-ish, they upped it to 18 and a half. So we basically built the the sandbag wall for about 16 and a half. So by the time that came along, we tried to add more, but there's just just no way. So both of those houses, oh, foot and a half to two feet of water maybe, got in. Fortunately, I think most of their furniture was was taken upstairs already by volunteers or they helped. Then we sandbagged the two houses to the to the west. Just just for lack of or a point of reference, the flood of 93 where the Jasper Dam broke was supposed to be the record that would never be broken. That was 17 and a half feet, and we hit 18.6, 18.7 Thursday about 10 o'clock. So we set a record.
Not only to that list of volunteers, but the entire community really stepped up, did everything they possibly could.
Yep.
Thank you. Moving on to the street department work report is for your there for your review, coordinated transit plan.
This is the report that CCAG did for us for the state. And really, the the meat of the report is back here on page 176 where it lists out our goals and strategies for the transit system.
Need a motion to approve, right?
Correct.
If I can have a motion to approve the plan as presented? Motion is second to approve the plan as presented. Any further questions or comments? Any further, Brian?
Nope.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E2, 2019 Slurry Seal Project Final Pay App of $277,576 to Intermountain Slurry Seal. I can have a motion to approve that.
Some move. Second.
Motion is second to approve the final pay to Intermountain Slurry Seal in the amount of $277,576. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E4 is to approve a bid for a one-ton truck for our street department. What they are proposing is a $2024 to 350 in the amount of $31,375 from Billion Automotive. From what I read on there, there'll be about another 15,000 of stuff that they'll put on that truck, so it'll still fall within their $58,000 budget that they add for that.
Yeah, I haven't come up with, I haven't gotten ahold of them to get a firm price on it, but the last one, excuse me, the last one we did in 2012 was right around $7,800. So it'll be, I think it'll be well below the budgeted number for that.
Very good. If I can have a motion to approve that quote from Billion Automotive for $31,375?
Some move.
One of those is second. Motion is second to approve from Billion Automotive for $31,375. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We also have a change order that the administration is proposing for the traffic lights on Holly and Split Rock. The way I understand it is it's a change order in the amount of $4,510. I understand it is to get you on a more concise, all your lights are the same and and it's a.
We're using, yeah, we're using a video detection system now. We're using one out on the west side of town at Holly and Heritage. We also use one at Sioux and Holly right now. And what they had in their bid package was a different video detection system, so we're just trying to keep it all the same, so all three systems are the same. And they have been very good. Dave could attest to that. When we started out with the old sensors that were in the asphalt, they didn't work very well. And when we put the camera in, it did work very good, so.
Makes a lot of sense. If I can have a motion to approve that change order in the amount of $4,510?
Some move.
Motion is second to approve the suggested change order in the amount of $4,510 for the traffic lights at Holly and Split Rock Boulevard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You want to give a brief update on on where the state's at with that project?
Um, I think they have all the ADA compliance stuff done. The poles, last I heard, would not be available until almost December. So they do have some of the conduit and stuff in place for the new poles. They're going to replace all the traffic lights. And they said they were going to replace the school zone lights, so with the cabinets and everything involved, so they're doing it on their dime, not ours. So kind of a nice thing. They said they went and looked at the bases of the poles that were there originally, put in 1990, and they don't meet their standards anymore, so that's why they're replacing them, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Item E6, we have a pay application number one from Journey Group on the asphalt patching. It's pay app one and the final app, $181,999. If I can have a motion to approve that?
Some move.
Motion is second to approve the first and final pay app to Journey Group in the amount of $181,999. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Might add that I thought they did a very nice job out there, Tammy. It's a very good company to work for with and they're a good partner of ours. Thank you to them. E7, Brandon Park Edition Change Order Number One, plus $3,663 for poor subgrade there with, so it's to soak up construction. If I can have a motion to approve the additional $30663 to soak up.
Some move.
Motion is second to approve the change order adding $3,663 to soak up constructions contract. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E8, Brandon Park Edition Payment Pay App Number Three, the amount of $356,984 to soak up construction. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Some move. Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number three to soak up in the amount of $356,984. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
By the looks of the pay app, they're they have $937,000 completed of a 1.575 project, so it looked, you know, roughly 60% of their contract was complete.
That that project, okay.
Um, yeah, just a quick update. That one, that project is actually pretty much on time and they're working away on it. A lot of that cost will come this next month when they actually start paving. It's been really wet out there, so they've been kind of holding off on that portion of it. So hopefully soon.
Treading away. E9 is the Holly Boulevard Improvement Pay App Number Two, $402,803 to first rate. If I can have a motion to approve that?
Some move.
Second. Motion is second to approve the pay app number two to first rate, the amount of $402,803. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just a quick update on that one. They were pushing really hard to try to get that opened again on Friday, the 20th. I don't think they're going to quite make that. A lot of the contractors left to help other areas, like Excel left the job site to go to Sioux Falls because of the tornadoes. The railroad is behind now because of flooding down in Sioux City, so we're kind of waiting for those contractors to come back. And then a portion of Holly was also underwater, not for very long, but it was. So there'll be a little bit of cleanup work to do there, too. So we're shooting for the last Friday this month, the 27th, so two more weeks of closure.
Very good. Thank you. E10 is a Resolution 24-19, authorizing transportation alternatives grant application as presented by Tammy. It's a walking path on Split Rock. Is that correct? If I can have a motion to approve that grant application?
No move. Second.
Motion is second to approve the grant application as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, the curb, concrete curb repairer pay app number one and final from Journey Group, also $69,355. If I can have a motion to approve that payment?
Some move. Second.
Motion is second to approve the pay app number one and final pay app to Journey Group for $69,355 for the concrete curb repair out in the, I call it the golf golf course addition or whatever if I'm mistaken, country club, there you go. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E12 is a letter of a request from Eastern and Ellis in Eastern to give a letter of support. You should have some discussion on that, Brian.
Yeah, Ellis in Eastern is submitting an application for a grant for work to their tracks, and they've solicited support letters from a number of jurisdictions, including If the council would like staff to write a letter of support for the grant, certainly let me know. At this point in time, I'm not sure that would be politically advantageous to the city. I know that there's opposition within the city and the city residents to the increased use of those tracks, so.
Appears to me to be picking the cull over your casket.
Yes.
Okay.
Picking the what?
The cull over your casket.
So, so.
I see no.
Yeah, the the question I've got, if the council would like us to write a letter, you can authorize us to do so. Otherwise, we won't. We'll certainly contact Ellis and Eastern and and let them know. I think Tammy's given them a heads up that we have reservations regarding the letter.
I think the residents of Brandon would want us to write that letter.
Everyone good to go?
Yep.
Good to go with non-action?
Yeah.
Good. Item F, moving forward, AE2S Water Study Agreement. We need approval on that, minor tweaks by our city attorney. Under that, if I can have a motion to approve as revised?
Some move.
Motion is second to approve the AE2S Water Study Water Rate Study Agreement as amended. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F2 is to approve the purchase of two pickups from quotes, one Chevy 1500 extended cab for $27,825 and one Chevy crew cab for $30,200, both from Billion Automotive.
These ones don't have six numbers to them though, so. And I did do some checking, the state's, South Dakota State's bids are pretty comparative to the prices that are listed there. The only difference is is they're offering a 2019 model, and they don't think they can meet the deadline of the year anymore, so.
So these are 2020s?
2020s, correct.
If I can have a motion to approve those two pickup purchases?
Some move.
Motion is second to approve as outlined. Aye, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water main looping. Water Main Looping Project Pay App Number Three in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and seven to blacktop paving. Motion to approve that payment?
To approve.
Is there a second? Motion to second to approve pay up number three to blacktop paving, the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven oh seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Pay up number three for the Main Avenue Interceptor Project to H&amp;W Contracting in the amount of two sixty-two, two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Motion to approve that pay up? Motion to second to approve pay up number three to H&amp;W Contracting, two hundred and sixty-two thousand five seventy-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. August thirty-first financial statements were in your board packet for your review. Any questions on any of that for Christina? There's also an update on the Veterans Parkway Rice Rice Street project in your packet. Anything else, Brian?
Yep. We had a request come in today for a fireworks permit for homecoming next weekend. Yes. We don't have the twenty-four hour notice for this packet, so my question is, would the city council be interested in having a special meeting in the next, either this week, early this week or next week, to consider that request?
Backyard Pyrotec is the one who contacted me, but it's Booster Club.
Okay. We'll schedule something, probably this Wednesday, maybe next Tuesday. We'll take a look. Okay?
It'll be a short meeting.
Yeah. Might not be two minutes long, but.
Very good. Send out a request for that then, Brian?
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion to second to adjourn at six fifty-two PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, this right away.
You can print it, you gotta spend it.
We don't press, we just plug.
Same here.
School doing a two-hour late start again tomorrow? Paul, is the school laying another two-hour late start for the rest of the week or just tomorrow?
Day to time, I think.
Day to time?
Yeah.
Till the roads open back up?
Yeah, I don't know. Has he sent anything out?
I just missed a call from the school mess.
Oh, I wondered if that, yeah, it was an eight hundred, I saw that, yeah. He was planning on it.
Yeah. I figured it's probably.
We're thinking maybe we can get Highway eleven opened up Wednesday, so.
Once they, once they open it, is there any assurance that there isn't damage to the road?
That's, that's the problem.
Well, it's a scour under that bridge, they have to check every time.
They gotta wait for that.
So it's not over the road itself on Highway eleven?
It's not the issue with the road so much, it's not with the underside of the bridge. By the time this happens, they have to do an inspection to make sure it's not going to go.
Just gonna ask him, what's your?
Because of water.
Well, thanks, I don't know if it ever made it over, well, it might have made it over the top down by.
Well, Terry Rock, what? Well.
So much for me.
I'm not sure if Terry Rock had. But I don't know if it flooded up. I guess I haven't been down. I'm sort of annoyed that they're getting their water, so I don't need to get in the way.
I waited a number of days before I drove down Forty First Street. I didn't even have to go down there.
Well, I didn't even, like, I drove by when it's, when it came over the top. I drove over there just because, you know, it was middle of the morning. Nobody else is in town. Oh, no. I mean, yeah, fifteen cars, car going on the street, getting, taking pictures, videos. So I got out of there before.
I'll put it back. Walked in on the, parked in the big Subaru. Walked to the north. We just left it down there. Took a picture of it a while ago. I think in our rear cam, I think from the time that we left, it's still, we quit coming up, it had to have been at least a half minute.
You know, the Subaru, it came up and went back down. Big Subaru, it's just.
We were, we were.
It's just unbelievable. I mean, I was sitting there talking to the writers, they used to go, like, when that tornado went through and all that, to how lucky we were. The writers, like, well, you know, we only come through the way.